Good evening and welcome to tonight's Town Council meeting here in Council Chambers, Monday, March 7, 2016. It is a little bit after 7 o'clock. Agenda item number one, pledge of allegiance, please. Agenda item number two, roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor Strata.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Excused.
Counselor Vecchia.
Excused.
Six present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept Town Council meeting minutes of Wednesday, February 22, 2016.
Second.
Any changes? Seeing none, simple hand vote, all in favor? Motion carries, six-zero. Agenda item number four, Subcommittee reports. A, General Government Counselor Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the General Government Subcommittee was held on Monday, February 29, 2016, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Steves, Citizens Member Rick Nash, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo, and Treasurer Collector Mindy Ernest Funnier. The meeting was opened at 7:14 after a quorum was present. Agenda item one was vote to accept the General Government meeting minutes of February 16, 2016. Motion was made by Nash, seconded by Steves. All in favor? Let's see, there was some discussion, again, on this procedure, but I'll agree that going forward when possible, the General Government Subcommittee should review the minutes before they go to council. Agenda item number two, review health and dental insurance renewal for Blue Cross Blue Shield Plans effective July 1, 2016, and entertain a motion to send to full council for ratification. Ms. Funnier explained the current health program for employee and retiree contribution and this year's rate increase that has been established by MIA, our insurance provider. MIA's health insurance increases ranged from 4.5% to 12.8%. The rate we received is 6.4%. And with, there was an average of 8.9% across the board, so we've actually done very well. There's no increase in deductibles. The average family plan will increase $40 and the individual plan $18. For retirees, the family plan increases approximately $57 and individuals $22. The dental plan will increase 2.9%. The plan includes two cleanings a year and $500 towards procedures. The plan allows for a $250 rollover for future use, and this can help when planning, to the future year, and this can help when planning costly procedures. A new program is being offered to Southbridge and a select, a few select communities from MIA through the Blue Cross Blue Shield, and it's called Telehealth. It will allow patients to go online to talk live with a local medical professional. Copays will apply and it will be available 24/7 when it rolls out. The estimated start date is sometime in July. More information will follow. Motion was made by Counselor Steves to recommend council ratify the health and dental insurance renewal for Blue Cross Blue Shield Plans effective July 1, 2016. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, three-zero. Motion to adjourn was made, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:26. Submitted Denise Clements, Council Chair, uh, General Government Chair. Thanks. Uh, no meetings, uh, we just had a meeting this evening, and Counselor Steves took those minutes, so we'll be getting, uh, those as soon as possible, hopefully before the 21st. Thank you.
Thank you. B, Department of Public Works, nothing to report this evening. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Steves.
Um, yes, we did have a meeting on February 24th. Um, I just finished typing up the minutes just before 4 o'clock, so they have not, they are obviously on the packet, I don't have a copy in front of me, I'll just quickly summarize them. Um, we, we had two agenda items. One was to review and discuss the requests from the Mass DESE to appropriate by borrowing, well, the list here is $32,000 for social studies and foreign language textbooks. We will get to, when we get to it, the actual sum was $31,370.24. And entertain a motion to recommend to council for ratification. We discussed that after a little while. Mr. Lattei from the School Department explained what was going on with that issue, and that this money was going to be coming out of the $200,000 that we had approved from capital, capital spending for textbooks last year. Um, that'll leave a little bit left over that they're going to bounce off of the School Department heads and see if they have any other unfinished issues that need to be addressed. Um, the, the minutes will be, have more detail, um, when you see them. Um, and the other agenda item, we, we unanimously approved that proposal. And the other item was to discuss the proposed program changes to the town's curbside collection program. Andy Pelletier brought up that issue. Um, that was something, we kind of discussed that a little bit earlier, uh, at previous meetings here, but he wanted to change it so that we can do, uh, two different things. One is that we would have four days of collect, of trash collections, and have combined it so that each of those days would have bulk pickups as well, as opposed to a one day a week bulk pickup. Um, he also mentioned that, um, the Board of Health is looking at some bylaw changes to, to the trash collection program. Those things will go to public hearing. Um, these particular, the particular changes that we were discussing, um, they don't need to, um, and they also, he also mentioned that they don't really need to go to Town Council approval because of the way the Board of Health laws are written, um, but there'll be more details when I actually, when the minutes are in the packets. And we have no meetings scheduled.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I did have a meeting last Thursday, March 3rd. I do not have the minutes prepared for that. I will have that this week and sent in to Yvonne. Um, I don't have any further, uh, future meetings planned at this time. Thank you.
E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor O'Clair.
Uh, no minutes and nobody's scheduled.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda item number five, Chairman's announcements, I have a few this evening. First, I, I received a phone call this afternoon from Counselor Vandal, and he asked me just to give the public in, a, a quick overview on his current condition. He is at home, and he is recovering from a very tough last two months. It all started with a fall. He's had three hospital stays. He had two heart stints put in, um, and a stay at a rehab. Um, he hopes to rejoin this council on March 21st, so, um, he's very eager to get back here and finish his term, but, um, he's actually at home watching tonight, um, and he wants to congratulate those that are being appointed. Um, Counselor Vecchia is doing better and continues to make gains every day. Um, hopefully, uh, we'll have greater news that he'll be coming home, um, but he still does have a long recovery in front of him. The yard waste containers at the, uh, DPW facility are available for our town residents, um, and it's for town residents only, and this is not intended for commercial use. So, um, they're up on Torrey Row, um, Gulford Road, excuse me, um, so they are available. And my last announcement this evening is, um, Saturday, March 26, 2016, is our Household Hazarder Waste Day from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at our landfill. So that is the time where you can check your garage, make sure you got no old paint thinners, bring them up, paints, anything like that, get rid of it. Um, so, um, it's open also for our town residents. Moving on to Agenda item number six, Town Managers' announcements. Mr. Sanangelo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items. Uh, first, uh, as being part of the local stakeholders group for the school system, uh, the meetings have went very well with terrific input across the board from all different types of citizens, from, from parents, from teachers, from administrators, it's been really excellent. If anyone has any input that they would like to make to that group, please don't be afraid to give me a call, uh, email me, I'd be happy to take your recommendations and comments directly to the local stakeholders group as well. Recently, I was honored in being selected the chairman of a group called MOR, which essentially is a group of, uh, town managers all throughout central Massachusetts, uh, to basically coordinate with them sharing of ideas across the different towns, so we could all work together to help each other and to see what issues each town is facing, and maybe bring some solutions that have other, to problems that other towns have already come up with and bring them forward, so I'm looking forward to that as well. Uh, we will shortly be holding a next, the next meeting of the Downtown Partnership Group. Uh, we're looking forward to doing that. I know it's going to be at the Fins and Tails, but we haven't, I'm not sure the date yet. I'll be announcing that shortly. What we're trying to do is to get all the downtown merchants and business people working together to improve our downtown retail environment, so that's going to be upcoming shortly as well. Uh, the town, as you know, is currently, uh, and we discussed tonight in a General Government Subcommittee, we are looking at an energy conservation program that is going to change all the lighting fixtures and lights throughout every town building, uh, and that will be before the next Town Council for our vote, but effectively, the great thing about that is, we're going to save money on our electricity bills, about $12,000 on an annual basis, at the same time, replace all the lighting throughout our various town buildings. And next step of that, though, that's really positive, uh, we're going to be looking at the Housing Authority buildings as well, and the program is even better for the Housing Authority, so hopefully, uh, we'll be able to save money for the Housing Authority and improve the lighting for the seniors as well. This has been something the Town Council has asked me to work on, it's been an important program to them, and I'm glad that I was able to kind of carry it forward to this point. Uh, we are in the process of negotiating, uh, the fire union contract, and we'll be entering into negotiations with the Police Department very shortly, so that's moving forward as well. Uh, on balance, things are going very well, and that's all I have to report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, are there any citizens that would like to address the Town Council? Please state your name, your address, and please keep it respectful. You'll have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill. I'm here to talk about a low-hanging fruit. Um, I was, I was looking at the master plan of 2008. It's the Southbridge Heritage Tourism Master Plan of 2008, um, for a different reason, but I noticed that bike racks are depicted in the proposed plan, and they are also included in the master plan that was done, uh, just last year. Um, and as you know, I'm a big proponent of getting a bike rack here. Um, I know the library has one, there's one at Wells, um, and if we're not going to take the one from Wells, um, we should invest in one here. I think it's, it's not a huge expense, there's a lot of issues that the town is dealing with, this one can be dealt with very easily. Uh, a bike rack would encourage a healthy lifestyle, um, sustainability, um, and provide an alternative to our auto-centric society. So, your goal for 2016 is to implement this aspect of at least two master plans, I don't know how many, um, get a bike rack. Um, so if squeaky wheels, get the grease, squeak, squeak.
Maureen, if I could, could you just talk through, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
If you could just tell me, what specific location would you want the bike rack?
Uh, anywhere at Town Hall. I, I think there's a great place, uh, for it, aside from the stairs. I wanted to say, um, you know, when I've ridden my bike here, I tie it up to the, to the racks that are on the handicap ramp. That's not fair to anybody who's using a wheelchair, we should both have a place.
So, the answer to your question is really a positive one, you're like, to our, through, I want to say it's RMPC, CMRPC.
Yeah.
Right now, you can get free bicycle racks.
Oh, really?
And the only cost of the racks is for the transportation of the racks themselves, for the hauling cost.
Awesome.
So, it is available, I recently sent out a letter to my department, it's asking if there were locations, and frankly, I didn't get any response. So, if you have a legitimate place that we could put one, I can look into that issue and we can just figure out the freight cost, but I, I need to, I would want to know where exactly you would want the ramp to benefit to it.
Okay, I think there's a great space, like, in the back stairs, um, the back entrance, uh, there's a little bit of a space between the cars, um, and the stairs.
If you don't mind, just, meeting with me this week sometime, we'll take a look and we'll see what we can do, okay?
Yeah, sure.
And I'll follow up on that, and we'll see what the, the cost of the hauling is, and we can figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Doyle. Any other citizens? Please state your name, address, you have five minutes, and keep it respectful.
Uh, thank you, Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. Um, I'd like to speak to the council tonight about, um, as you may know, I'm very involved with recycling, sustainability and such, and generally speaking, when we get, bring up the subject of recycling, inevitably comes up the term, oh, pay as you throw. If, if pay as you throw communities recycle more, pay as you throw communities, if we were a pay as you throw community, we would be so much better as far as recycling, as far as our waste reduction, and one of the re, one of the things I want to emphasize to the council is, um, sooner or later, within the discussion of pay as you throw, I have to explain to, that the reason we are not a pay as you throw community is because we receive 400,000 tons of other people's trash, and as such, we should not incur any cost to our residents for rubbish disposal, and that includes rubbish cans, but that's a matter for another five minutes. So, as far as pay as you throw goes, I decided I'd do a little mathematics and get some idea of what would pay as you throw mean to, uh, the community. So, there's two basic types. One of them is to weigh the containers at the curb. So, the weight of the, the weight at the curb with individual billing, um, I based all of, both of these figures on 6,000, based on 6,000 households producing 4,500 tons of waste. That's approximately 28.8 pounds per week, and to anybody who puts their trash out, about 30 pounds a week is considered respectable. So, when I decided what amount of money should I pay for throw generate, I started looking at, uh, a couple of different sources. Now, the town has, uh, um, $350,000, which the town pays and then is reimbursed. Everybody's well aware of the fact, that's not, um, realistic when it comes to trash pickup. So, I didn't use that $350,000 figure, although ironically, if you take, um, 4,500 tons and you divide it into the $350,000, um, dollars, you end up with $77 per ton, which is actually more money than strangers who bring their trash to our community pay. Apparently, it's about $60 a ton for, to drop off at our landfill. But, getting back to pay as you throw as I calculated, I used the amount that came on this little flyer. Casella estimates the curbside pickup at, to be valued at about $675,000. At $675,000, picking up the trash at the curb and weighing it, uh, we would, we would end up with about seven cent, seven and a half cents per pound. The average weekly cost to the resident would be about $2.16, and the average annual cost to the residents would be $112.32. Now, if residents had to pay $112.32 a year to dispose of their trash, I don't think we would see a mass exodus from the town. However, even $675,000 is not what we'd be losing. So, I looked into some other figures. Town managers supplied us with this. I added up the red figures that we would be losing. That came to 2,970,125. Okay, using that figure, we end up with about 33 cents a pound. The resident's cost is $9.50 per week, and the annual cost is now $494 per week. Gets a little higher. However, we look at, we go back to this. Casella estimates the benefit to the town at $4,094,000. So, I use that figure. $4,094,000 comes out to about 45 cents a pound. The weekly cost to the resident would be $13.10, and the annual cost to the resident would be $681.24. Lastly, we all throw around a figure of four and a half million dollars. Oh, the total package the town can see, so I even use that, even though it's a ballpark figure that we all throw out there, I use that. At four and a half million dollars, we're now talking 50 cents a pound. The resident's cost is $14, $14.80, and the annual cost is $748. That's weight by curbside pickup. If anybody wants a copy of that to check my math, they can. The second version of pay as you throw is pay as you throw trash bags. Based on 6,000 households, just the same, and based on two bags per week, 52 weeks, the town would have to find a supplier for 6,624,000 trash bags for, for residents.
Excuse me, Mr. Buxton, you've hit your five minutes.
Uh, could I have an additional two, and I'll get through this, and...
All in favor? Additional two minutes.
Uh, thank you very much. All right, on the, uh, pay as you throw trash bags, I used the same dollar amounts, starting with $675,000 from Casella's flyer. At that rate, we would have, we would have to charge approximately $1.08 per bag, and the average annual cost to a resident would be $112.50. Uh, at $2,970,000, the cost of our bags would be $4.75, and the average, the average annual cost to residents would be $495. The $494 million figure. Now, we're up to $6.86 per bag, and the annual cost to the residents is $682. Lastly, four and a half million. If we want to raise that four and a half million, so nobody has to go without anything, our bag price is $7.21. The annual cost to resident, average resident, is $750. Now, with both these programs, there's a situation of, we have to be concerned with accuracy. With the weight at the curb, that's similar to the, uh, program of Recycle Bank, where there was a scale on the truck, you had an RFD tag. On the subject of trash bags, if we're going to look at having trash bags at a 731, uh, 721 cents a piece, we have to be concerned about counterfeiters. We might have to have security threads and, and holograms on our trash bags to avoid somebody from just silk screening town of Southbridge. Both these subjects are a waste of time. Once again, pay as you throw has no place in Southbridge. We accept 400,000 tons of other people's trash, so that we don't, we are not a pay as you throw town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council with something that's not on the agenda? Great. Moving on to Agenda item number nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Shane D. Woodson to Police Chief effective immediately.
Second.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it, and I've got to tell you, tonight I'm very proud, uh, to be recommending Shane Woodson as our new police chief. Uh, as most of you know, when I was hired to this position, one of the things we discussed was the position of, you know, about hiring police chiefs, and I told you that one of the most difficult things I did in my past was going outside of a police department to hire a qualified police chief. It's one of the most difficult things you can do, because it really hurts morale within your department. I have to tell you what was great about evaluating, uh, the current candidates we have, that we had two extremely qualified internal candidates, who I felt absolutely comfortable with recommending for the position of police chief. Uh, but as you know, we wanted to make sure we had the person who was the most qualified, and we went forward, I went out, and we hired a company called Badge Quest, which is one of the most respected, uh, testing firms in the entire state of Massachusetts. Uh, they test for all different positions within the police department statewide throughout the state of Massachusetts. Uh, Badge Quest does what they call an assessment center. In other words, they do both testing, and they do sort of real-life scenarios, and it, uh, the, the candidates have to go through these scenarios and answer how they would handle a given scenario to make sure that they're in fact prepared. Uh, I was very happy to see when I got the results from Badge Quest, and I have absolutely zero involvement in terms of the pro, the testing process, uh, but Shane was ranked number one, and Jose was ranked number two. And when I called up Badge Quest, because frankly, I was kind of curious, I would have liked to see the actual test numbers, and they said they don't give them out, that's not something that they do. They review those test numbers with the state of Massachusetts, uh, but on a local level, they don't give them out. But what they did say to me, very clearly, we were lucky to have two highly qualified candidates who either would make a great chief for the Southbridge Police Department. With that, I wanted a little bit, just to quickly talk about, and I'm going to do Shane's first, and I'll do Jose's when we get to it, but I want to give you a, a little bit of, of Shane's background, because I think this is critical, and I think you'll understand this is very, very well, and I think the public should understand the type of qualified people we have here in Southbridge. So Shane has right now a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. He also have a, has a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology, a Master of Science degree in criminal justice, graduated from the Masters Program with a 4.0 GPA. Uh, you know how hard it is to get a 4.0, but I never saw it. Um, so that was great. He's also been a member of our department for 21 years. He's held every rank within our department, so he's gone through internally every different step, and has been trained in every job in the department, which gives you a lot of respect for the people underneath you, so you have a real understanding of what each of your men and women are doing within your department, and when you provide leadership, that's a really nice asset to have. Uh, he's been, also been, um, a sergeant for four years, a lieutenant for six years, and a deputy chief for the last year, as a, in a provisional chief since July 2015. You know, one of the things that I look for when I'm selecting a new police chief is, what do people underneath think about that chief? And I got to tell you, when you have a chief who's not respected, you get all kind of comments from department members who come to you to tell you why you shouldn't select a particular chief. In Southbridge, I received zero negative comments, and from the officers I did talk to, they praised the chief dramatically, said what a great job he's doing. He has the respect of his men, and that tells you a lot, so I'm very proud, uh, tonight to be able to recommend him for the council to move forward as our permanent police chief.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes.
Counselor Clements.
Yes.
Counselor Strata.
Yes.
Counselor Manah.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair.
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries.
With them, Mr. Chairman, we're going to have, uh, the chief come up. Uh, we have somebody who is going to be doing a, a pinning of the chief, and we also, I think we're going to start with, uh, before the pinning, we're going to have our town clerk actually do the swearing-in. Maddie, if you would.
(inaudible). Can I raise your hand, sir? To you, Shane D. Woodson, solemn swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a police chief for the town of Southbridge for an indefinite term, faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth, and abide by the charter and bylaws for the town of Southbridge, so help you God. Thank you. I just need you to sign the book. It was right here. There it is. Thank you, and I also have to have you sign, I give the court book of interest in the open meeting law, so if you would just sign your name right there, please. Thank you. Yep. And this is yours. Congratulations to you. At this time, I would like, like to invite, um, retired police chief Daniel Shmett to do the pinning.
If you could, would you like to do the pinning up front with the family, and I'd be doing some pictures with the families, if that would work better? I saw this young man that looks great in a suit, so I wanted to see him up there. There you go.
There's just a couple of things that I, I didn't want to miss, so I wanted to write them down. Um, I'd like to thank the town manager, um, all the members of the council for their support and for their trust. support and for their trust in me and for the future of the department. I'd like to thank the members of the council, Council also Vandal and Appalvecchia, who aren't with us tonight. Uh, they both called to express their support, and Jose and myself, and I appreciate that. I'll try to roll through this quickly without getting emotional. Uh, to my, my parents and my sister, um, for all their support over the years. You know, my sister and I never had much, but we never knew it. You know, I was talking to a retired guy a couple days ago, he called me to wish me luck in my future, and, and I always looked up to him as a mentor over the years, and he knows who he is, he's here tonight. And he had said, "Boy Shane, you know, your parents, your mom, she must be really proud of you." And I said, "Yeah, I think she is," and, uh, he right, went into how his son was similar in age, was doing pretty well in his field, and he sent me an article about his son in the media. And I said to him, because he was kind of, you know, I don't know if he was surprised or not about the success of his son, but he said, I said, "Why you, you know, why do you sound so surprised? Your son had great parents, so I would expect nothing else from him than what he's doing right now." And I think, um, by me standing here tonight, I think I'm honestly here only because of my parents and my sister. Um, for me to come with the way that I was raised, and I'm not saying it's negative, the deputy and I always say when we go through the hiring process, we look at these candidates that we do exhaustive background checks on, and we say, you know, what's their background? What's their, where did they come from? Um, what's their family like? Did they ever have to work for everything or anything at all in their lives, or were they handed everything? And we find that, not speaking for the deputy, he's here, um, the candidates that actually have to struggle in life a little bit make the best police officers. So I appreciate and respect, and it's a strength of mine, uh, growing up the way that I grew up. Um, so my wife Heather and my kids, Katie and Michael, my son and daughter, uh, you know, I know every dad probably feels this way about his family, but I have the best family, the best children any man could possibly ask, ask for. Um, they're the reason that I get up every day and come in and do this job. Um, they always keep things in perspective. A couple weeks ago, when I had my suit on and I'm getting ready to test out for the chief's job, kind of nervous, and I usually don't get nervous, but it's a big moment, big time in my career, and, and, you know, it is what it is. My daughter looked at me when I came downstairs in my suit at, you know, six in the morning and said, "Dad, you look so fancy." And, and she's like, "Why do you look so fancy?" And I said, "Well, I have to go take a test, hon, you know, to be the chief." And, "Well, God, I'm happy, I don't have to dress up that fancy to take tests at school." So, thank you for always keeping things in perspective for me, Katie. Um, to my other family members who are here tonight and my friends, you know, I, for those of you that don't know me very well, I've got aunts and uncles that were like second parents to me growing up, and they're here, and I appreciate everything they did for me. Um, I've also got friends here tonight that I've been friends with since childhood, since we were kids. Um, and there's a few members of this department, fortunately for me, that I was lucky enough to grow up with, come through the ranks with, go to high school with, college with. Uh, one here tonight went to the police academy with me. Um, those guys that I've been able to rise up through the ranks with, they're another reason why, you know, they've really helped me over the last 20 years achieve this goal. So I respect that and I appreciate that, to the retired and the active members that helped me get here. Um, another academy classmate of mine sent me a picture earlier today of him and I on graduation day, and I was thinking, man, I was 21 years old, and, um, you know, at that point in my life, I wasn't married, I didn't have children, that was the happiest day of my life graduating and becoming a police officer. And thank you to him tonight for helping me keep everything in perspective and why I do this job. Sometimes the higher up you go, the harder up it gets, the higher, harder it gets, and, uh, but that picture right there today reminded me of why I do this job every day. Um, to the retired Police Chief Dan Charette who came here tonight, we all know he used to like talking at these things, I don't. Um, he, he used to go on and on and on, so I apologize, but this man was my FTO when he was a sergeant, he broke me in as a kid, and, you know, I don't think I ever said anything to him publicly, but thank you, because I don't think I'd be here right now without your support over the years. To the deputy chief, or soon to be deputy chief, and he'd kill me if he knew I was going to do this to him. Um, when Chief Charette retired and left in July, him and I have had, we had several private conversations and, um, about how we would run the department, the administration being in acting terms, how we're going to try to keep the whole department together. And I have to tell you that, uh, Jose, you know, you've always had my back, brother, since, since this all started. We've been through a lot of stuff together, and I respect that, and I won't forget that. And finally, I'll end on this note, um, to the men and women that work for our department, it's not my department, it's our department, and all the retired members that are here tonight that I was fortunate enough to work with and learn from, and some of the recently retired guys, um, you will be missed, but I've learned something from all of you over the years. And, you know, I'm proud to say that I work for this department, I'm proud to wear these patches on my shoulder, and I'm proud to say that I'm the chief here. I couldn't do this job without anybody that's in this room right now. Um, I'm the lucky one, you know, I get to get up and talk at all the, the press conferences and say what a wonderful job the police department does. Um, you know, I get the credit for everything when things go well, and my name seems to always be in the paper. But without the men and women that are here, none of that's possible. And we, we don't have a very good police department without them. They're the workers, they do everything for this department. So thank you for your hard work and dedication, and I, you know, honestly, I look forward to the future and, and how we can grow and make the department a better place to work. So thank you.
Before we move on to Agenda Item Number 10, I would just like to publicly thank all the friends and families, coworkers that have come out to support the appointment of our Police Chief Shane Woodson. Agenda Item Number 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Jose A. Dinghy to Deputy Chief effective immediately.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please. Oh, excuse me. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I wanted to just talk a little bit about another appointment that I'm very proud to make. Uh, had an opportunity to, you know, have a variety of discussions with both the chief and the soon-to-be deputy chief, and it was really, what came across really clear to me is, is the teamwork. Uh, these two gentlemen work extremely well together. And again, looking at the resumes of both of these, you see the kind of quality we have here in town, and I want to read that to you as well. This is Jose's biography a little bit. Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice, Master of Science degree in criminal justice, member of the department for 19 years, served as a school resource, resource officer for five years, Director of Cops and Kids Program since 2003. This program has received state and national recognition and is now a model program for other agencies. Held rank of Patrol Officer nine years, Patrol Sergeant four years, Administrative Sergeant five years, and Lieutenant for one year. Temporary Deputy Chief since July 2015. One of the great things I had an opportunity to do when I first came here is to review the ranks, uh, within our police department. And it's wonderful to see here in Southbridge, because we've heard this nationwide about the issue diversity and how your police force should represent your community. It's great to see that diversity spread out throughout, throughout our department. Jose is a perfect example of that, speaks fluent Spanish, and puts a tremendous amount of effort into our children. There's no requirement in the deputy chief's job description to work with children, and through the Cops and Kids Program, he has did an incredible job, and God knows how much that helps each individual child's life. So I want to congratulate him on, on all the work he's done for the town, to thank him, and I'm honored again to be recommending him for the position of Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Roll call, please.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Do you Jose A. Dinghy solemn swear to perform all duties incumbent of you as a Deputy Chief for the town of Southbridge faithfully and impartially according to the laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the charter and bylaws of the town of Southbridge? So help you God.
I do.
At this time, I would like to invite the newly-appointed Chief of Police Shane Woodson to do the penning ceremony. Thank you.
Yeah, if you would, just so that the people at home can watch as well.
I want to take this opportunity to thank the Town Manager for all those kind words. Um, maybe I could take you on the road with me. Good cheerleader there. And the Town Councilors for, uh, entrusted me to be the Deputy Chief for this town. I am honored and take pride in serving our community. Um, I believe we have a great police department and will continue to uphold our mission to protect and serve. Um, thank you to my friends, family, brother and sister officers for your years of support throughout the years. I would like to take, thank my parents, my brother, my two sisters for their support throughout the years and the many fights, because you actually probably prepared me for this post. So I thank you. Most importantly, I would like to thank my beautiful wife. Without her, I wouldn't be in this position. Um, it was her idea that I become a police officer. Um, she got the application, she got me going, and here I am because of her, and I'm truly grateful for that. Um, the position of Police Officer requires many hours away from your family, holidays, weekends. Um, you're truly in this occupation as a family, not on your own, and I'm grateful for my family that's always been supportive of that and has let me, um, advance in my career because of their support. Um, I want to thank my three wonderful children, like the chief said, your fam, everybody, every dad's proud of their family. Uh, my three wonderful children, one who's on FaceTime all the way from Florida, um, she's away in college, my son Jeremiah, my mini-me, they call him, and, uh, my daughter Leah, thank you for lending your father to this community. I again want to thank this community for letting me serve you. Thank you.
Before moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, I also want to thank the family and friends of Deputy Chief Jose Dinghy for coming out and supporting his appointment. I am going to ask to take a five-minute recess as the room will, um, continue to congratulate. We'll take a five-minute recess. Welcome back. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Excuse me, 11. Vote to ratify health and dental insurance renewal for Blue Cross Blue Shield. Plans effective July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? See none, roll call, please.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yep.
Counselor, uh, O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Six yes.
Now moving on to Agenda Item Number 12. Order that up to $32,000 is appropriated for social studies and foreign language books. That is, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Town Manager, is authorized to borrow up to $32,000 under Chapter 44 of General, Mass. General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes therefor. This is a two-third roll call vote required.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Counselor Steves?
I just have a quick question. I know that, that during the course of, I, I just have one quick question. I know that during the course of EHS, um, Bill and Ty was talking about how most of this money is, is coming from the, uh, the funds that we had already approved. Um, I'm just curious about the way this is phrasing, does that technically allow us to borrow more than what we already approved?
We were authorized, I think it was up to $200,000.
Yeah.
$200,000, this is underneath the $200,000, and we will not go above the $200,000. I don't even think we're going to get quite to the $200,000, but we're close.
I know he was saying that, let's see, as of, at the subcommittee, he was saying that we'll have about $34,000 left after this.
And they have not come back to me and asked for any additional money?
Right.
But we'll see, but as of right now, we have that amount we could authorize if we choose to.
Okay.
Any further questions? Any further discussion? Good. Roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Strata?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 13, Counselors Forum. Start with Counselor O'Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, sorry, I'm pulling up a message. So, um, Cornhole for Cancer is Saturday, April 16th at the Polish Club. Um, cash prizes for the top teams. There will be two double-elimination brackets of 16 teams. The upper bracket is a $100 entry per two-person team and is for experienced and competitive players. The lower bracket is $50 per team and is for inexperienced players looking to have a good time. For more information, visit facebook.com/cornholtournament, email southbridgecornhole@gmail.com, um, call Rose Alicia at 765-7777, Sean Moriarty at 774-230-6870, or Adrian Alvarado at 774-230-3802. And aside from that, I just want to say congratulations to, um, the two, to the, uh, police, the new Police Chief and the Deputy Chief, um, tonight. It was really great to see the whole community turn out for such, for such a nice event. And that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to give a shout out to the seniors today who attended the luncheon at the Community Center. It was, uh, well-attended, and Pat Trahan, as usual, did a fantastic job with chicken cacciatore. So again, I encourage the seniors, this is something you can do here in our community. Uh, the first Monday of the month, it's just restarted for the year, and, uh, you know, take the opportunity and come out and see what the Community Center has for you. Uh, I also wanted to thank, um, and congratulate both, uh, the Chief and the Deputy Chief. Uh, I've worked with them on a number of events and, and issues, and I have to say, I, I'm so proud that they are now officially in the community as our Chief and our Deputy Chief. Congratulations, guys, can't wait to serve with you.
Thank you, Counselor Manna.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. I would like to also thank, um, our newly-appointed, um, Chief Shane Woodson and our newly-appointed, um, Deputy Chief, um, Jose Dinghy. Um, they, they are marvelous for the community, and it seems like, um, the two of them combined have about 40 years of experience here on the Southbridge Police Force alone, and that is very telling. Um, congratulations to them and also to their families. Um, they do, um, both, um, Chief and Deputy Chief do much in this community, so I, I am very grateful to have them here, um, serve in our community. Also, um, I, I just want to say I was able to attend the National League of Cities Conference this weekend, um, only half of it. I couldn't stay for the full thing, the full thing doesn't, um, get over until Wednesday morning, unfortunately, so, um, there was much, much information to be had. Um, it's, it's similar to the MMA conference that we are invited to in Boston. Um, this, I, I had the opportunity to meet many people throughout the country, and one thing that I can say very truthfully now that we all have in common is we all face the same issues. And it, it's, it was an amazing experience, and I hope to go to another one. Um, I encourage anyone up here, sitting up here, if they have the opportunity to go to any of these National League of Cities or even just, uh, sit in on one of their audios. Um, it's very informative. I encourage you also to go to the MMA, and I hope to see you all at the Ethics Train in, in April. Um, that's going to be held here, right here in Southbridge. And, um, I just want to say a couple more weeks till spring. I'm very happy, so, and that's it, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, thank you and congratulations to the new Chief and Deputy Chief. Um, thank you very much for all of your service so far, and maybe work together well over the next several years. Um, also, I wanted to announce that, uh, that for those people who are in town who are interested in historical issues, um, the Historical Society on March, on March 9th at 7:00. in historical issues, the Historical Society on March 9th at 7:00 at the Arts Center is doing an overview of Southbridge, of our ancestors, its homes and people. You think you know downtown and all the buildings and who lives there and what was there and what may not be there still. You can kind of get a look at that from what it looked like a century ago, in 1906 and the late 1800s. Town has changed in ways, and in some ways it hasn't changed. And so you can get a good look at that, that's part of the bicentennial. There's a series of programs that they're doing that are part of our bicentennial year, so you might wanna check that out. Also, I wanted to follow up, remember a couple of council meetings ago, Ms. Whitney came up and talked about, I'm sorry, not Whitney, Ms. Williams came up and talked about the Gulfwood Road situation. Do you know where that stands? I actually drove down, I came down, home one way from work, came down that way, obviously it's all blocked off on both sides, came down through Denfield Road, and that road is definitely narrow and definitely needs work, and the Ellis side is actually worse than the Denfield side.
Just because, again, I have a hard time with the streets being relatively new to towns, though. You're talking about where the road is completely blacked off as a result to the beavers?
Yeah.
We're talking, that road, okay.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure we're talking about the same road that used to the streets. So the answer is, we've had the State Department of Transportation come in and look at that road, and you're right, the issue here is that there's a narrow road and there's a ton of water on each side of the road, where it's a serious safety concern.
Yeah, I know.
So, the problem with the road is, we're trying to look and see if there's any way we could put guardrails on it. In order to do so, you'd have to sink something deep into the soil. Heather is working with the State Department of Transportation, and they're gonna look at what they can do to potentially, they're gonna drill holes down into the road, and they're gonna look at how deep they would have to go to be able to secure a guardrail across it.
Right.
We had talked about that, about 25% of that road is in the Southbridge part, and about 75% of that road is in the Charlton part. So, the first thing is, once they dig these holes to check it out and find out if it can be done or not, and if we're fortunate enough that we can put in guardrails to protect the citizens from going off the side of that road into the water, then the next step will be trying to figure out what the cost of that will be. So, the answer is, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, we're not sure yet if it's viable, but we are in the process, and we're trying to get that all put together for the spring so we can get an answer.
Okay. And I know also part of it is the fact that not so much of people going off the road, oh, that's an issue, more it's the water coming up on the road, which has been an issue for years and years.
Yeah, well, the beavers have caused part of the problem, but I wanna make it clear that that's not the only part.
Yeah, I know.
It's also filled in its own right, and the water's gotten deeper and deeper, to the degree that you could lose a car in it, it's that deep in some parts. We actually discussed this, myself, the town administrator of Charlton, Robin Craver, and Heather actually had this discussion today, so I'm very aware of it. So we are gonna look at it. You know, the problem is, is that we don't know, the difference of, is it a $75,000 or $100 project, or is it a million-dollar project? We don't know the answer to that yet. So I think that the price of the solution is gonna go as to what we can or cannot do with that road. Because I'll tell you this, as long as it's a safety hazard where somebody could get killed going off the road, I'm not reopening it.
Oh, obviously, and you shouldn't.
I just can't make that decision. So, if we can figure a way within a reasonable dollar value, then we will reopen it again, and that's sort of where we're at.
Okay. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Strata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only congratulations to Mr. Dinghy, Officer Woodson for the deputy tourian, your chief. Congratulations, officer.
Thank you. Counselor Manna said something in regards to a training that she attended, I just also wanted just to make the citizens aware that I attended a training also with Counselor Strata. We are part of the National Association of Latino Elected Appointed Officials, and we were at Long Beach, California, where we were able to participate in a forum and talk about some policy in regards to energy and solar projects that are coming on and things that are happening nationwide. So, a lot of, 18 hours of class, but it was a well-worth experience and time. So, I will be forwarding some of those slides to all the councilors, because I think it has some awesome information that we can review and some of the things that we can probably try to implement here as we continue to talk about solar projects and solar, and some energy situations. So, moving on to agenda item number 14, is discussion of next meeting date, which will be Monday, March 21st, 2016, at 7:00 PM in council chambers. That is our regular scheduled town meeting, but we do have a council of the whole meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:00 PM here. So, agenda item number 15, adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? Motion adjourn, meeting adjourned, thank you.